Mr. DeFalko.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Present.
Mr. Parker.
Present.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Here, Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Reed. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, and Public Laws nineteen seventy-five. Certification of this notice is on file on the Office of County Clerk. The written notice of this meeting was posted on the Baltimore Memorial Temple Building, was mailed to the Burlington County Times, was filed with the clerk of Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all persons who requested and paid for such notice. Please rise to the right. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. And then we have open offices for board members. Ms. Gardi, I don't know how you want to handle this. We have.
We have them all. It's one of the same. So we have your oaths and vows.
We're doing the oaths.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, no, not yours yet.
But just being sworn back there.
Okay.
I repeat, repeat after me. I state my name.
I, Jason, John Morris, thanks.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board.
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board.
Plus three.
Plus four.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. If you can sign them and get them to anybody in the meeting. Say, I will. All right, I would like to open up the floor for nominations for a chairperson.
I'd like to nominate, um, Mr. Yawkowski. Yawkowski, I'm so sorry.
Do you have a second?
I have a.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? No other nominations, I'll close the nomination process. Uh, Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
I will now turn the meeting over to the chairperson after he is sworn in.
Hi, to Yawkovich. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board Chairman, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, nominations for the position of Vice Chairman to the Planning Board.
I'd like to nominate Nicole Saucier.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Vice Chairperson?
Second nomination.
Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Saucier.
Congratulations.
Swearing, may I stand up?
Yep.
I. Nicole Saucier. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of Vice Chairperson.
The office of Vice Chairperson.
According to the best of my ability, so help me.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, continuing the reorganization. We have a nomination for the appointment of the Secretary to the Planning Board.
I'd like to nominate Joe Torpe, Deputy Secretary.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Secretary? Non-Secretary.
Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Nominations for the position, for the appointment of the Solicitor to the Planning Board.
I nominate Ms. Gardi.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Solicitor to the Board?
Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Nominations for the position of the Engineer to the Planning Board.
I'd like to nominate Rick Valamo.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations for the position of Engineer? Non-Secretary. Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nominations for the position of, appointment of the position of the Planner to the Planning Board.
I nominate E.R.I.T. and Tim Kulaikulani. Did I say it right?
Be good, yeah. I didn't say, could not cast.
I follow the same, I follow the same.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations for the appointment of a Planner?
Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So for, for the meeting dates last, uh, this year and for the reorg, um, in the past, we've done, uh, January and February, the day after a holiday, but then Ms. Gardi had a conflict with Tuesday, so we moved January and February to the last Monday of the month. I think Ms. Gardi stated that she doesn't have a conflict on Tuesday.
Correct.
So do you want to move it back to Tuesdays, the day after the holidays in January, February, or do you like the last Monday of the month better? Uh, it's up to you as a.
So I have a conflict on Tuesday.
Okay, so then we'll keep it the last Monday.
Third Tuesday, right?
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, I have a Planning Board in East Green.
Okay, and that's why I just didn't want to change it on my own. I wanted to have it in the meeting. So we'll keep it as the last Monday of the month for January and February?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
So the twenty-sixth of February is the next one.
Yeah. And then the reorg, because I noticed for the reorg now for next year, it'll be whatever that last date is, that last Monday in January. We have a resolution.
Move on. Minutes of the meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We have a motion to approve those minutes. I'm sorry, November.
I know, we're talking about February night.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Mr. Yawkovich.
I'm staying.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Klein, you are not board member, so just in a day and a half.
We can go on the resolutions. I believe that we can take the first six resolutions for the year two thousand twenty-four.
Ted, I'd like to take Resolution twenty twenty-four dash five regarding the meeting dates for the year two thousand twenty-four and offer a recommendation to the Board to modify its meeting, meeting time to six P.M. It's supposed to be seven P.M.
All things.
All things.
That's up to you guys, who can get here for six. I have no say in that.
So what do you, oh, sorry. As of now, the Mount Holly Environmental Advisory Committee meets the last Mondays of the month at six. Um, I was prepared to make it work, doing back to backs, but if we move it up, then I'm certainly happy to talk to the committee about what are the times might work for them instead. Just wanted to alert you about the potential to don't know that.
That's only two, that's in January, February.
Yeah, we'll just be two meetings at first of the year.
And at this point, it would just like February, so it's not, we can work around that if it's everyone else.
And the professionals too, the professionals.
Yeah, they, let's have a conversation. I know there's been talk in the past, who can show up, who can't show up.
The township and council meetings are six. I know, I'm just saying that like, so.
Okay, so you, this was not my idea, okay? Why people come back and be like, Joe wants to go at six, this was not my idea.
Is it a discussion?
It's a discussion. If you don't want to, if, if we don't have a unanimous decision, you don't have to do it in what.
It's never thought, it's still good, because it's never thought.
But if people makes, if everybody can make sex, I, I don't know. I get paid to be here at what time I'm told to be here, so.
You want to just take it, I'll take it.
Well, no, these are, these are, these are for at least the next two meetings. Well, we just keep it the same for the next two meetings, and then we can discuss as we get closer to the rest of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, you go ahead.
So do you guys, on an individual basis, want to get your feedback to me as a secretary?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, please.
And then we'll have a discussion in March about amending meeting time?
That's what February, we'll keep the same and same.
Yeah. And I'd also implore anyone who's in the public to please let us know if date and time changes, we work for you guys too. Because it's like, whoever.
Okay. Back to resolutions. Resolutions two thousand twenty-four dash one, two, three, four, five, and six. Five, establishing the meeting dates. And six, establishing the newspapers that we're going to advertise. The notices coming from the Planning Board. Do we have a motion to approve those resolutions?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one through twenty twenty-four dash six.
Second.
Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, February will be at seven. And then in February, we're going to decide the rest of.
You have to read, read our responses.
What should be the responses and see the feedback?
I just want to make sure that I have that right.
Responses, second. I forgot that like, it's all went to.
Am I correct? You want to throw the resolution off in March if we change? We'll have to update you, we'll have to do it in a day and a half. Yeah, amend the notice.
If it's changed.
If it's changed.
And Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seven. A resolution, a resolution on the application of Matthew Hocken LLC for approval of a D-five variance and bulk variance relief for parking as to the property identified on the tax map of the township of Mount Holly as block forty-seven, lot nine point zero one, more commonly known as sixty-six dash sixty-eight High Street. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second.
This was a variance, right?
Yes, it was.
Mr. Yawkovich. Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier. Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Mr. Klein, you want to get that meeting from the next day.
Mayor and Councilman.
Yes, yep. I got that.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eight. A resolution on the application of Mount Holly Operator LLC for approval of a D-five variance. And bulk variance relief, relief for parking as to the property identified on the tax map of the township of Mount Holly as lot ninety-six, lots twenty-one and twenty-two, more commonly known as sixty-four Ridge Avenue. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
My motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Yawkovich.
I'm staying.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
New business. Application number twenty twenty-three dash three. Site location, Grant Street. Preliminary and final site plan. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the tract into seven lots. Six lots will be used for the construction of three sets of proposed twin single-family homes, side-by-side duplexes. Lot seven will be an open space lot proposed to be dedicated to the township. This, I believe we, we've been notified, the application, applicant is requesting that the application be carried to the February twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that the application now so be not carried, and the application as well. We, we've moved this forward about six months already, over half a year. It's about time they're ready to be proposed, to hear your second application.
There's a second.
I second that.
Yeah, I second that.
Yeah.
You can do it with new notice, because it is a new year and a new schedule. They have indicated that they're, this is Thor Patnack, they are trying to get county planning board, county.
To buy it.
We don't know where, but we don't know where that is.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, at this point.
We keep pushing it, not, we need to take it off.
So.
And I would take it off with the request of the application, because we're working out.
Dismiss it without prejudice?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to dismiss this application without prejudice?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry. Mr. Yawkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Adler.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Mr. DeFalko.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
I'm staying.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Saucier.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford.
Yes.
Application number twenty twenty-three dash nine, sixty dash sixty-two High Street. The applicant, Light Club LLC, of sixty sixty-two High Street, Unit two oh one, Mount Holly, New Jersey, use variance and site plan waiver to change the use of the unit of office space to retail space.
Good evening, John Adams, from John Adams Law Firm, on behalf of Light Club LLC. I have two witnesses going to testify here tonight. Uh, Mr. Butler, excuse, Mr. Little, who is the owner of the property, and Mr. Urri, who is the, um, the renter of, uh, Suite two oh one.
Mr. Adams, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Before we start, um, this is a use variance application, so the mayor and councilmen are not going to participate. They're recusing themselves, they're not going to comment, they're not going, they may still be sitting here, but they're not going to participate at all. Um, we do have six eligible or seven?
I think it's six, because we have seven of our alarming zeros.
Six, seven?
Seven, we do have seven eligible members.
Oh, because of him, that's right. He can't. No, he can't do fifty-five High Streets, that's what I'm saying, because.
Yeah, I got you.
So we're, we have seven members, I did believe that you forwarded the notice, um, provided for the, uh, application.
I did.
Yeah, and, and I reviewed it, and it's sufficient. So the Board has jurisdiction. Okay, do you want to have your, do you want to give an overview, and then we'll swear the witnesses?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I will, I will do that. Okay, so, um, uh, this, this is just sort of a layout, if you guys know where Fula is, which is dispensary. This is Suite two oh one, which is directly above the, uh, the dispensary on High Street. And again, next to Mr. Little's property, which is the local, uh, the local layout. Uh, so the, the concept here at least, um, is that the dispensary sells cannabis products. And, um, Mr. Mr. Yuri here is a, um, high school friend, longtime friend of one of the owners. And, um, so what they would like to do is create a synergy between the two of them, where, where he sold cannabis products, um, and, you know, the dispensary sells the cannabis. Uh, this creates a synergy between the business, uh, there's not a, this is what would be the only dedicated, uh, spot in Mount Holly, uh, to have, you know, those, the, that kind of product. There is somebody selling it, um, uh, over, um, by, you know, by the bucket of blood. Excuse me, the, uh, the. Yeah, the, the, the old tavern, yes. Uh, so, uh, concept herewise, um, you know, which is, you know, you've got the, it's the second floor here, so you've got the stairway up, okay, there's, there's a hallway here, there's a bathroom right here, okay? This is really not used space at all. Uh, Mr. Mr. Yuri, who, um, works, um, in another job, uh, where he's remote, uh, would be using this part right here as an office, in the office for, for, for the property. Uh, these areas here, these two areas here, would just be for storage, okay? And then, um, this area right here would be where the consumer comes in, um, sees what products they want, they're on the display, they would then, they would then go to the, the counter right here, and this is where the products would be, uh, would be kept. And then you would, you would tell them what you want, and then they would give them. Also, uh, what they plan to do is, uh, have the ability downstairs, so you could order while you're waiting, uh, from, uh, from Fula, uh, to get your cannabis products, because if you, if you haven't been there, uh, what happens is you go and you order, and then you take a seat and you wait for some time, and then they bring, then they bring the product out. Uh, so here, uh, they, uh, there would, there would be the ability to order directly, and then they would just bring it down to, down to, down to. So, um, uh, in this space, this hallway right here was previously a law firm. Um, it's been empty for about two and a half years, but, but Mr. Mr. Yuri took it. So, um, without further ado, unless somebody has a question, me, I'm going to, I'll tell my witnesses on it. Okay?
What's the final space?
Pardon?
This space here.
Oh, it's, it's just empty.
Like?
Yeah, it's just, there's just nothing there, and there's no reason. It's kind of a big hallway now.
Okay.
Okay, so, so there's a door here, and you go through here to get to this office space, all right? Uh, this is really just nothing. Uh, there's nothing in there, there's no plan for anything in it.
Okay.
Uh, and, um, and then again, um, this door does exist, but again, there's no really need for it. This is all, this is the existing layout, uh, of the property. There's, there's really no construction, uh, going to be done, uh, other than to sort of make this wall right here opened up, so, so it has an open counter.
Can I mark that as Exhibit A one?
Sure, yes, sir.
So those offices are vacant now, you said?
Okay, so, oh, this whole space is vacant, except for Mr. Yuri, who's, who's working remotely, um, at his other job, right?
Oh, he's not there.
Pardon?
So he's not there.
Well, he works at another job remotely, and he comes in here sometimes. But, but the plan is, once he's, what, 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 if this is, if this is a go, the plan is he would work remotely from this office.
So he can operate that and then retail, then, you're saying?
Correct, he, he would, he would have a salesperson, um, who would be at the counter here. He's there for like additional backup, sort of managed.
Okay.
So where do those stairs go?
Those stairs go down to a hallway, um, which is where, uh, where, it basically runs straight through the building. Uh, so if you went, if you went into Fula, right through the door, you went, if you made a left turn, you would go, you would go right into Fula. If you basically walk straight, you would walk out of the building.
So that's an interior stairway?
It's an interior stairway, and so we expect the people to come in here for the first floor.
So the, as the only way you can get into the building, walk through the front door, walk through the dispensary, and go up the stairs?
Well, no, the dispensary, um, uh, I don't have a, a drawn dispensary, but, but when you walk through the front door of, of the building, okay, the dispensary door is to The dispensary door is to your left, alright? If you walk straight through, you have to go out the building to the back parking lot, okay? Is that correct?
No, it goes to a central staircase.
Alright, so wait, 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 we have to, yeah, this was getting beyond sort of legal opening, but, so at some point when the client is gonna testify, we should swear you in.
Yeah, so, well, again, if you, if you walked straight through, you would go out the parking lot. But as Mr. Little said, about halfway through that, there's a stairway that goes up, and there's a second floor and a third floor to this building.
Do you wanna swear any witnesses?
Yes. Let's, let's just start with Mr. Little first, you're good. Should we swear at the same time?
Sure, but I'll, what's your first?
Derek.
Derek? Little?
Yes, correct.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
And then, and while we're swearing people in, our professionals will need to be sworn in for comments that they make, so do you two swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board, your testimony today and your comment letters today and the future and all throughout the year?
I do.
Thank you. So, go ahead, counsel.
So Mr. Little, come, do your work, please.
Sure, my name's Derek Little, I'm a restaurateur, I own the local Adrianian pub with my business partner, Callum Satchel. And then, in twenty twenty, my family and I bought the building next door, which is sixty-sixty-two High Street, where we inherited tenants of SODAT, which was that drug rehab place on the first floor, which went out of business. And then we were lucky enough to get the dispensary in there now. And then, on the second floor is office space, and on the third floor is residential. That's kind of how that goes. Just a real quick point on the layout of the building. As you enter the front door, to your left, that's where there's some double doors to go into the dispensary. If you were to go straight, there is a glass door, once you get past the security guard that lets you into there. That goes to a central staircase, there is no means to exit on that first floor, or another entrance. That's the only entrance from High Street to get in and out. And then that central staircase would take you up to the proposed location for the retail space. And then if you turn the other direction, there is a real estate broker who rents an office from us.
Now, you said when you, when you bought the building, you inherited current tenants, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And?
So the second floor had no tenants, and that's office space.
And that was office space?
Right.
And that, how long did it take to get a tenant into?
Was able to get the real estate broker just over, a little over a year ago, so I was empty for about two years. And then, and then Clem came along last July, so that was about two and a half years.
Okay, and is it hard to rent out retail space or office space right now?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, is that because of the people working remotely?
All of the above, yeah.
All of the above, okay, and, um, let's see. And when, and when, and, were you, when Mr. Yuri, Fight Club, leased this space, you were aware that he was doing it for the purpose because he wanted to open up a retail space?
I've had that conversation with him, I also had that conversation with Mr. Patel, that owns the dispensary, in trying to create a synergistic relationship, yeah, for sure.
So his whole purpose of leasing this space was not for office space, but really for?
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah. The dispensary didn't want to deal with, with those details, they just wanted to focus on their cannabis products. And then they want to augment it by having that as a, basically as a service to all of the people that come there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have, you have parking in the front on High Street?
There is, depending on the time of day, yeah.
And then you can park in the back and walk, walk around to get inside that?
That's how the dispensary does it as well, yeah. Some people try to cut through the restaurant, and I mostly let them, but it isn't always great.
Okay. At this point, do you have any questions for Mr. Little?
Can you give us, give me an example of the product at the second floor?
Mr. Yuri will do that, or you have another? Yes.
Yeah, I'm the landlord in this conversation.
I actually have a question, so you mentioned that the third floor was residential, so is there still a tenant there at the moment?
Yes, two, two bedroom apartments, and they're long-term tenants, they've been there at minimum eight years, I've had them with me for three.
I'll reserve the right to bring Mr. Little back if there's a question that comes up later on.
Okay.
Mr. Yuri?
Hello?
Good evening, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Clem Yuri.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, Mr. Yuri, before this board, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Yuri, you're, you're high school friends of, of one of the owners of Fula, is that correct?
Yep, graduated military school.
Okay, and you currently have a job where you work remote?
Yeah, I work for American Collectors, so we do insurance for collector cars, so I can work from home, I may be working from there.
Okay, and right now, you generally work from home, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, but when you open up, you intend to occupy one of the offices here, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll do that to, to manage that operation and to?
Provide, you know, backups.
Backup support, okay. And you, and you plan to have one employee at a time there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and your hours, what hours you plan to have?
About ten to ten.
Okay, now, in this area right here on the map, what is that area gonna be?
Okay, so that's the, that's the front area, is the shopping area, when they come into the, to the, from the front door up the staircase.
Okay, and then, and then you'll have display cases on the walls?
So, yeah, we have the split glass display case right along the walls as they walk in. And then there's the counter, and behind the counter is all a bunch of the rest of the products. So, I mean, they can look at the glass, and then come to the counter and make any other orders that they want.
In this diagram here, this is how the office currently is situated, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the only real change you're looking to do here is open up the wall right here so you can put a counter, is that correct?
Yes.
But otherwise, no, no other construction? Okay, and, describe this area right here.
Okay, so no, that's, that's will be the behind the counter. Again, more of the products, and you were asking what kind of products, but basically, we sell wraps, that's hemp wraps, tobacco wraps, papers, glass, cigarettes, basically smoking accessories, grinders, incense, merchandise.
And then you're, you're tentatively using these areas as just storage, is that correct?
Yes.
To the extent that you need it, is that correct?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about, about how often you have deliveries.
Most of our deliveries is gonna be coming through the front door, there's, I, I go and do pickups for the deliveries. Nothing's being delivered to the store. So most of the deliveries are glass boxes, they come through the front door, it's not palletized or anything. And then like the tobacco products I buy locally, so I drive and go get them.
Okay, and where do you expect your customers to come from?
Predominantly from Fula, so, basically, as they come in, the employees at the, at the Fula counter will also be, you know, inviting them upstairs, especially while they're waiting for their, their product, because there's a little, about five minutes or so in between the order and them picking up, so they can come upstairs, look around, pick up whatever accessories, and then they get a little text from downstairs, hey, product's ready, come down and get it.
And when you, when you rented this place, you, you had planned to put this retail store in here, is that correct?
Yeah, that was.
That was your, that's your goal?
That's the goal, yes.
That's the goal, you don't really need an office space otherwise, is that correct?
Otherwise, I mean, I could still, but yeah, I mean, I need to be there, so that's, it works out perfectly.
Okay, and hours of operation?
Again, ten to ten is what we're looking, kind of mirroring what the Fula dispensary is doing.
Days per week, seven days per week?
To, to, one day off Sunday.
And describe again the products, oh yeah, I think you already did that, the products you're, you're planning to sell. And, do you, do you, do you expect to have any more parking requirements than already exist?
No, because again, they're coming in mostly for the, for the business downstairs, so it'll be the same parking that, that they'll be, they'll need to, for that business, and there are nothing extra for me.
So, a particular use, this area here would create a synergy. It only would exist if you could be near each other, is that correct?
Yeah, well, I live in Norristown, so I drive all the way up here, so otherwise, I mean, that's the only reason I, I would be doing this, is for this. I mean, there's, you can get a dispenser, a smoke shop anywhere, but the synergistic relationship is why I came to do it here.
Questions from the professionals?
I think Tim was kind of alluding to it. You're using that office strictly for this business, or will you be conducting other business out of it?
No, strictly for that business. I'm, I work, but it's not going to be related to that, that space.
Well, I think that, like he's asking you, you're gonna be doing your collection business at the same time that you're working there?
Yes.
In that office, is that correct?
Yes, yes, maybe I didn't.
That's the question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So is that not used?
No.
No?
I, it would be like anybody, a clerk, sitting up there, waiting for a customer going in, going on their cell phone. I mean, he's just sitting there.
He's doing a collection business out of there, too.
He's working remotely for another employer. The way I interpreted his testimony is, he just happens to be sitting there, and like if I'm sitting in court, I don't think it's.
So, the other question, there was something, a little discussion before, we started here. There won't be any use of the product from downstairs upstairs, correct?
No, that's, no.
Good question. Will there be any use of cannabis products in your facility?
John, I think, I think it's a good, a good discussion, because obviously everyone, I should know, is based on Ben J. Cercy's recent ruling on the seventeenth of October approval of the use of cannabis lounges coming to be approved in New Jersey.
Yes, no intention of making this up.
The question would be, is there any intention in the future that they convert it into a lounge?
For me, no. I don't know, but if there's anyone else with those plans, but for me, no, that's.
There's also the residence, which is on the third floor, which, anything that would happen in that.
So we would be, we would be agreeable to excluding a lounge as part of the variance, is that correct?
Yes.
I guess the only other question, not that this has to do with specific application, but you're also aware that there's probably like six other places within walking distance that will be selling the same product that you will be, including the bagel store. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
No, I mean, I've walked, I walked around and I looked at it, I mean, but at the same time, the people that are coming?
I agree, but being at location is absolutely better than trying to find someplace.
Yeah.
It just has a, I'm sure you did your due diligence.
Yes, yes.
Not sure each other, a bagel place that has it too, but I'm sure what the synergy is.
As Mr. Yuri already testified to, it's the only place that's really dedicated to those kind of products. For the others are sort of, it just happened to be selling there. Where this has got a link up, and a way of getting it downstairs, and a way of, you know, creating a flow.
Oh, you know, John, you did mention earlier on, I'm not sure if it was just misspoken, but you had mentioned when you're describing the use in the beginning, you had mentioned because it is gonna be a store, individuals can go there and they can just purchase product out of the store if they want to, without having to, because it's downstairs.
That's correct.
But you mentioned also that they would have the ability to order from upstairs?
From downstairs.
So they have to go downstairs first?
We know, yes, so if they were downstairs, they could order.
And have you alerted based on what you said later on?
Yeah.
So you want to be clear that they cannot order from the second floor?
No.
That's correct, so let's, let's, let's go through that testimony on there. So, would a person downstairs be allowed to order product from, from your establishment?
Yes, from downstairs, yes.
Okay, during that wait period?
Yes.
And that would be then delivered downstairs to them, is that correct?
Yes, it can be delivered downstairs, or they can walk up and look around.
Okay, and could, once they're upstairs, is there any way to order downstairs?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
Thanks.
So is there gonna be any signage outside or any advertising that, because you're saying that people from the Tula is gonna be using it basically, is there any advertisement, somebody else might just say, well, I'm just gonna go in.
Walk up? Yeah, so we plan to do, I already have the signage plans already, I just need to know what the dimensions I would need and what to get.
Do you have any idea where you might place that signage?
Right outside the front, they have the, the.
Does, does the real estate office, they have a similar sign? And then would you also like to have a sign inside?
Inside, as well, in, in Fula and also on the door, the glass door, so when they walk in, they can see that goes to upstairs.
So, so the synergy, basically, for your building, the real synergy is the fact is that they can order right from downstairs from you, and it can be delivered.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering, why do we want them to go up and have to maintain a business up there? Why can't you just have the, a storeroom up there or something? Just have somebody running it down, you don't even have to have a business up there, in my mind.
So, Mr. Yuri, you testified only you would have display cases? Yes, and, and you would have like bongs in those display cases?
There's a, there's, there's a ton of product that downstairs, they don't want to deal with, and I understand what you're saying, they can order for, but.
But when somebody's ordering a bong, they want to see it?
You wanna, you wanna be able to take it out, they wanna look at it, they wanna even, some people say, okay, how, how much water does it hold?
Same with grinders?
Yes.
Now, papers and things like that, people might.
They can just order from downstairs.
Yeah.
And we'll have a little kiosk on their ordering, so they could just, you know, and guide from upstairs or bring it downstairs. And that's mainly, we set that up for people who may not be able to climb the stairs.
I assume you have a, a good relationship with me down the counter, or you might have a pamphlet advertising upstairs as well? Would maybe a couple pictures of items that you may sell as well?
Yeah, on the, they have like a display, like a digital display, so, yeah.
So they'll be able to, someone will be able to, like it's in a secure cabinet, and if they wanna just handle the bong and, you can take it out of the cage?
Yeah, we take it out of the glasses, for them, they, they can handle it, you know, there's, there's also, we have little drinks, a little fridge there where they can get drinks and stuff like that.
But the, but in order to buy it, they didn't go to that window right here?
Yes.
And then, and then you have the stuff boxed up?
Yes.
Not in display, that they would purchase from, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we have.
A pair of shoes.
Right, yeah, like a pair of shoes.
So, I mean, I don't wanna step on the planters too, but, I mean, if it has, you're talking about a sign mounted outside of the building?
He may need a variance or something, he didn't want to do anything until he got the use terms.
Okay.
So he's gonna have to bring, I'm sure he probably will for the number of signs or whatever.
Okay, so you're gonna come back to the board for signs?
Well, as I, as I told him.
If they get approval?
If he gets approval, we're gonna look at the rules, and if we need a variance to do what he wants to do, then we're gonna do so. If he doesn't, we don't, but I, I didn't look at those beforehand, so I don't, I didn't look at the, the signs and stuff. But we've already discussed the situation where he may need a variance for, for, for the sign, and we would, we would do that afterwards.
We could include that.
But if, but if not, if there's not a variance, then the board's not gonna see the sign, is that correct?
Yeah, if it's a conforming sign, and it has the space and numbers. Excuse me?
They're gonna go through the code.
Correct, they would have to get a permit. If it's a conforming sign, then they would just follow the processes of anybody else. But if they wanna put ten signs up, one hundred fifty square feet, that's gonna trigger a variance. So they have to come back, please come so. I will, we would include that in any conditions, the applicant has acknowledged that, that fact. If the sign package is not before this board, that they wanna get the use variance review first.
Now, you could have more questions, but I'll let the board member go ahead.
I think there's a couple other questions that we could ask about in terms of the deliveries that were mentioned. You referred to your own personal delivery, but also the other items brought in. Is that going to be by a box truck, like a FedEx truck, or a UPS type truck, or Amazon? Or are you gonna have an eighteen wheeler pull up to the side?
No, they're, it's really small items.
So you're, it's your vehicle, your own vehicle, you're going and picking it up, or someone else is coming?
No, they, it's a, they delivered it the last time, it was delivered through by UPS.
UPS?
Yeah, it was just a few small boxes.
We call a box truck, okay, and trash and recycling?
Well, the trash and recycling is really handled by Mr. Little, and I, I think that Mr. Little, you would, you'd be willing to put another trash can out there?
Uh, sure, yeah, well, two things can happen, I mean, we'll see what the volume is, but I have an arrangement with the dispensary where we've increased the trash pickup for the four, four yard dumpsters that are behind the local, and we'll just be sharing that, so that'll just get picked up more regularly. And I don't think he's gonna produce a lot, but he's also can use that.
So there are, in the photo that I took, there are some recycling containers on the back wall. I assume you're gonna be putting your recycling into the recycling containers, you're gonna need more recycling containers?
Right, what I'm saying is that those will be exclusively for the residential, and so.
That's exclusively residential?
Yeah, at this point, yes, so that he'll be able to, along with Fula, use the industrial size. I don't know the right term for that.
Is that just the garbage?
No, I have both, recycling, yeah, both, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I noticed there was a, a vehicle parked in the back of the, up against the garage in the back.
Oh, that little van, that's, that's the, that's the dispensary, yeah, that's the owner of the dispensary.
So, the problem with being parked there is that it blocks the sidewalks.
Okay, yeah, he uses that for delivery, and that, that's what that garage door is, that was approved for that, but I can tell him to park there less, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
It, it's, it doesn't have anything to do with the retail space.
Understood, but everything's, kind of everything's on board here, right?
Oh, sure, absolutely, yeah.
So the board has to.
So technically, he's supposed to be parking inside that garage?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
So your customers are gonna come through the front door? They're not gonna come?
There's no means by which for them to do so, they'd have to go through the dispensary, and that's all cameras and security locks and everything else.
So they're probably parking out front, I guess, on High Street then?
Or you park in the back and walk around.
Get around?
It's right down from Vincent's Ice Cream Shop, so there's, there's the road, it leads, it leads right back there. So it's, it's like two buildings down, so you can easily walk around if you want to. But for the most part, you assume that people are gonna probably parallel park, but I know people that won't parallel park, so they, they. My son drives home in the back every time, because he refuses to go on a park.
So I pretty much know the answer, but just so we get some testimony, no new utilities associated with this that are gonna open up our sign?
And there would be no new utilities, this is, this office space is basically as is, is that correct?
Yes.
In the rear of the building, there is some cracked sidewalk around what I, I believe might be a stormwater structure, but I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
Just, you know, like to see it, you know, patched up. Um, just, you know, like to see it, you know, patched up, so, you know, there's cracks and stuff in it.
That, that kind of bridges between the local and the sixty-sixty-two High Street, but yeah, absolutely no problem, just wait for some warmer weather.
Yeah, 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 okay. Um, I think that's it, so.
No, um, so I, I guess we need to go through the positive and negative period, so. You're asking for use varies for retail on the second floor, which I guess isn't really a big stretch, because retail's permitted on the first floor, it's a little less convenient.
Yes.
And it sounds like you're not going to have any adverse problems with deliveries, because it's just not that much of a volume, and, you know, you just accommodate that, you can accommodate the trash, parking, there's public parking in the back, right?
Public parking out, out, yeah.
And you feel it's adequate.
Out front, or you would, or you would go, you know, that, and again, as Mr. Yuri has already testified to, the expectation is that most of the people that will be coming and using his services are going to be coming to Fuller first, they're already there.
Is that pretty busy now, I mean, so it's the...
Well, I'm going to tell you, I don't partake, but my, my, my son does, and, and he says yes, and he's in there quite frequently.
So the chances are you're having a good business.
So, yeah, so, so the, they're, they're, they're pretty busy, I, I personally have spoken to Pesh, one of the owners, and he says their business is booming.
I think that testimony is, there's a synergy there, it kind of, that makes sense, you know? Kill two birds with one stone, pretty much.
So I don't know, I don't know if the members of the board know, I did stop in there to do an inspection.
He stayed a long time.
Tonight or another time?
My point is that there is a security guard, it's just right down, they're probably going when you walk in.
And that's required for the dispensary, so yes. In fact, there was something, when I would go in there, they want to check my ID, and I said, I'm, I'm going through, you know.
I did the same, he still wanted to see my ID.
He still looked at you. I didn't care if I had them.
So we have zoning that allows apartments there in certain instances, offices, and we're being asked to change that, approve a variance for a business, and finding it hard to figure out what the benefit is for the town for that. I can see the benefit, the synergy between the businesses, however, I'm not sure how a, a business hidden on a second floor is going to benefit the economy of the town or benefit any, anybody except the customers going in there.
Well, I, I would submit to you, benefiting the customers benefits the town, because then more people come, and you know, you, you split. And, you know, either in, they're in, in town, they might stop at the local and have a beer, okay, or a sandwich, okay? Or visit the record shop that's right there, I mean, the things you have to do, I, I... That's not true, I live in East Hampton, and I've always said, you know, the problem East Hampton has is we're off thirty years. The problem Mount Holly has is the same thing, you're off thirty, you're not on a, on a major, somebody has to make a, a determined effort to come to East Hampton or to Mount Holly, okay, they have to, there has to be a reason for them to do it. But once they get here, this is a great little town, okay, and they see lots of stuff, okay? So, so, you know, when you provide one stop area for, for people to, to come to, where they can get, you know, all these, you know, all, all these things at the same place, then they come in, and then they see the local right next door, or they see, you know, the Vincent's Ice Cream Shop. And so it does create a synergy, and those synergies is what, what drives business, and that's what helps the town out. Driving, you know, driving people into the town, you know, for reasons. And again, I don't partake, but one of the things that my son tells me about Fuller, okay, is that they sell in larger amounts than most other establishments. So people, and there's a law, you know, on this, they, they sell in slightly larger, I don't know, they have a game for it, I don't know what the name is for it, okay? But, he said, yeah, yeah, nobody really used to sell this size, but he does, so again, that brings people into the town, right?
Going to hire people.
They, they, you know, then also they can, they can get stuff when they're at Fuller, it makes Fuller more, you know, more marketable, that brings people into the town. And that gets people to see the town, you know, I know people that didn't know, you know, the local existed. Said, you don't know the local? No.
Well, we're not talking about Fuller, we're talking about the business of...
No, I'm talking about the synergy.
So, yeah.
I'm talking about the synergy.
Yeah.
And the synergy for example...
I hear what you're saying, I just don't happen to agree that that's going to bring such, so many more people to Mount Holly, so I understand what you're saying.
I, I would submit to you that the reason that, that, that they zoned the way they did is because for the most part, okay, retail establishments are, are better on the first floor, okay? But then you need something, because there are, not all of those buildings are, but a number of them, you know, are not, are two and three stories, okay? So what do you do to make those things more, the zoning people said, you know, the zoning board, you know, you mess with it, you do the zone, you know, they say, you know, this is a good place to put office space, it's a good place to put, you know, residences, and those types of things. It's funny, unless you have a particular synergy, it doesn't make sense, you know, for most retail places to be on the second floor.
So if I...
Not any, there could be others, but I'm just saying, you know, this is an example of where it does make sense.
So I, I, I think a lot of the focus so far has been on the synergy on, on sort of the front end in terms of the customers. I'm more interested in potential synergies on the back end, this might have been alluded to earlier, but there are businesses, for example, downtown like Gonzo Glass. And Curious, you mentioned buying local tobacco, to what degree a local Mount Holly businesses might be involved? To what degree you've even considered local Mount Holly businesses potentially sourcing some of the products you'd be selling or otherwise? You know, how you'd be creating synergies on the backend, so to speak?
Well, I mean, I, just for some of the work that was done, I, I reached out to some of the, some of the, the, the Mount Holly, just to get my door, my door done, my glass door. But again, it didn't, they just didn't do that type of door, but I mean, besides that, the, the wholesaler, I don't, I, I'm not sure if they're in that their township, township of Mount Holly, but they're about twenty minutes up the road. But I do intend to hire people from Mount Holly, so I mean, from, on the backend, I've already talked to several people that are going to, that are interested in coming and taking some shifts there. Taxes, I mean, we'll be paying taxes to, to the township, so that benefits the township, and I mean, we also, we had a, a festival once, and we plan on having with, with, in conjunction with Fuller, and we plan on having a bigger one coming up in April. So all of that benefits the township.
I think the question that he was kind of alluding to is the example he gave with Gonzo Glass. That's a level local business, has been here for a couple of years, they also make custom bongs at the location, very specific. Would there be a synergy in which...
Would they be a lot?
Source product from them and force sale to bring in that synergy type of thing?
Sure, I, I, I don't, I don't mind, for me, I mean, I think it would, it would help them, because instead of people having to walk down the street, they can see more of their product in the, in the shop, I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Would you reach out to them?
And as a matter of fact, yeah, we already spoke, he, he works with Fuller, so we, we spoke about it already.
Yeah, I mean, to make the clarification.
Yeah, yeah, he, he, we, we've...
You've spoken to him already?
Yes.
Okay.
I have some questions for members of the board.
Question?
Yes, sir.
From the first and second floor, we use the common stairway, it goes also to the third floor through residences?
Correct.
And you were operating from ten to ten, what are we doing to control, control traffic onto the third floor?
Uh, there's a, there's a door that blocks the entrance to those, to the third floor.
All right, so you're saying there's a lot of volume going in and out of there, so?
Yeah, well, first of all, the security guard, as far as getting to the second floor even in the first place, but then there's another door that, that separates the third and the, second and third floor.
What time is the dispensary open till?
Nine.
So there'll be no security guard there from nine to ten if the store is open at ten?
He's going to close from the floor, they're closing.
We're mirroring their time, I mean, as well as the local, because people, they're secret, people might want to buy some, some products from there as well.
Which, like you said, there's a door that separates the second and third floor.
Correct, yeah.
And that's secure?
Yes.
Are there any issues with the residents on the third floor, from nine to ten, there's noise, anything like that going on?
They use a separate entrance from the second floor, as far as noise, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about something else, I, I don't believe so, there's a... It might be noise from them to you, rather than around.
But, as, no, and some of the, one of, some of the tenants actually were, were the ones that came and asked about working downstairs, so, you know, yeah.
Almost being able to work around this. What, what stair, what staircase do they use?
Can I open this up to? Anyone have questions or comments, and I'll start from, well, Louis, you're in the first row, if you have anything to say.
Louis Lopez, now there's Lewis Drive, long time, I was just curious, you said you sell rocks, you mean like moon rock, sun rock, full moon?
Rocks?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the, glass and wraps, 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 sorry.
Okay, that's all I have.
Third row?
Arlene Lifer, four ninety-four Mary Street, my main first concern was before I even heard this, was to talk about the sign for Fuller and how that ever got passed in a town that is a historical town, we have thirty-nine buildings on the national registry. That sign coming down High Street looks like Vegas. I was at a township comedy club just this weekend, somebody came down and said how beautiful your town is, we stopped at the prison, stopped here, stopped there. They looked at they saw that sign and said, what was that big green leaf sign, I, I, everybody laughed, and of course, I just sat there. I've asked about it before, we're going to do these things, we have Gonzo Glass, we have head shops galore. I'm just, I'm really distressed what a historical town this is, and we're really going down the shitter. I have no problems with dispensaries, do what you all want to do, I'm DOT tested, so I don't, I don't bother with it, but it's fine for everybody else. The problem is, is that you have a building, you're telling me there's not an exit, you're telling me there's one door in front of this building? If there's a fire, our fire department needs an entrance and an exit. You cannot have one entrance, one entrance and exit, there has to be one in your front of the building, your side of the building, or the back of the building. I'm really just concerned how much we're taking our town down, and we really have to start thinking about not just the businesses, but the residents that have lived here all our life, and you all know it, all of you that have lived here all your lives, know exactly what a great town this is. We have our ups and downs, but I don't want to see it keep spiraling down. Our beautiful downtown, our beautiful downtown is really taking a hit. Our county's trying, our people are trying, our volunteers are trying, there are people trying here, but I'm all in for business, but I'm really not wanting to see our historical town that's on a register losing its beauty downtown. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address?
Maureen Taylor Ford, one one seven Grant Street. Happy Wednesday, happy Monday.
Monday.
Still Monday.
Wish it was Wednesday.
Just want to spin off a little bit of what Arlene was saying about the sign, so you know, saying what she thought the sign, I want to agree with her about the sign, she brought it up before about the sign. And the variances for the signs that are filled the township ordinance in regard to what is considered for, specifically for, what was the historic town? The other thing I want to just get at is, we do have Gonzo, he's been here a few years, I know him, been to do some of his glass blowing. I guess my concern is, as just as a citizen, is, I'm not certain what your name is, sir, but if he, if you're coming here just because you have a contract with the, the business below, and it looks like you guys are going to be feeding each other, so, sir, as Esquire, you were saying that your son frequents that place, and it's, the business is booming. So if the business is booming, it's booming, so your business is going to be booming. You don't live local, you're coming from Pennsylvania, coming here because you have this relationship with the business on the bottom. So I guess my question is, is that the only, is, is the chain store, is that the only one that's, you know, for this particular name? What is the name of the store anyway? I don't even know the name of the store.
Oh, Fuller, Fuller's not a chain.
It's not a chain, okay, so that leaves my next question, so that was my other question, wondering if there was a chain store, you know, why would you come here?
So purely even though those, they are chain stores, yes.
Okay.
Many of those are not in, not in local businesses in system, they're out of state businesses, they came in.
Oh, wow, okay, so that was my big concern, just the fact that you said the business is booming, and obviously, the two stores are going to be feeding each other. And I, 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 I want, I'm not against businesses, but again, when we have so many already of the same businesses going on in town, it's easy to say you're going to generate this extra funds coming from downstairs, coming from upstairs, which then in turn, you're taking funds away from Gonzo's Glass also, and then we have the what, the revitalization? Was it the COVID thing where we had to come and give all the businesses some money to help them recuperate? So I just look at it in that aspect as a civilian.
So as Mr. Yuri testified to...
And then you're taking from someone else.
Is that he's already talked to him about selling his products in his store, so I don't, I'm not, I think this would be a boon for, for Gonzo's class.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, because it's another, it's another, again, if they don't have to walk to the dispensary and go to his place, and we can show some of his product in our location, then I mean, it still gets his product seen, and they may even take the time to go down and look at what he has.
Pat from Gonzo is actually working.
He works at the dispensary, yeah.
Okay, very well, all right, thank you.
Back, that's it.
You guys probably down to high end, Jeff Evers Meyer, two oh three Broad Street, Mount Holly. My concerns, my wife was on the story commission forever, and there were ordinances on all these, as far as Arlene says, on all the signs in downtown to keep them, so they had to conform with the codes that they passed years ago. And as I see now, we've got three pot shops downtown within a mile of each other. And now we're going to change our residential second floor and third floor, and our business district into businesses? You've got residents that are going to be going up and down past this business, there's nobody going to be standing guarding the persons, and tenants are going to change monthly, yearly, I own properties here, my tenants change, and you're asking whether they have any complaints on the third floor, what's going to be going on in the second floor? I just think this is kind of getting out of control, I think you guys are, if you're changing, I don't know why they had to get a variance to put that sign up on High Street? I don't even bring it up when people come in my store and they say, did you see that sign? That's unbelievable, and it all started with the sugar law service, law service, they weren't allowed to put a light on that sign, and I don't know how he got it up there, it's been there for ten years, but our township isn't enforcing the ordinances, and our code enforcement isn't being held, people aren't being held accountable for stuff, they're just doing stuff. How many more pot shops do you need, how many more things do you need? I mean, if it's in money, the township doesn't have any money, they need to bring in more money, you know, I just don't get what we're doing in this township anymore. I mean, it's actually ludicrous, you're going to start, is, is all of downtown going to become shops on the second and third floor? Is that what we're going to do, we're going to get rid of the residents on the second and third floor above those shops? And the same thing with fire, you have to have an entrance, I own a store in, in Mount Holly, I said the code enforcement should come in? You had to mark all your signs, you had to have fire extinguishers everywhere, you have to be able to keep, people have to be able to get out of the building. You have one way in and one way out, and then the residents upstairs have to come past the business and go through another business to get out on the street level? I just don't understand what this township's doing, and I guess I have to get more involved, because people aren't listening to the residents of Mount Holly with what's going on in the community. It's all great to make money and do things, we have to follow the laws and do some common sense and logic.
Just as a pointer reference, when I said there's only one way in, oh, there's, there's multiple exits, there's a second floor exit out the back door. As far as residents, they usually use that to go up and out, they're not going past the dispensary at all, the only thing they would do is collect their mail downstairs. So none of those things are a concern, the fire marshal's been through the building multiple times, all of those things exist. As far as the sign, that sounds like a conversation for Fuller, and not this conversation, but...
Back row?
Richard Dow, two three two Rutherford Avenue.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, what's your name?
My name is Richard Dow, two three two Rutherford Avenue, I do have to be with Mr. Evers Myers, I think the cannabis industry is getting quite out of control in this town. I think I've spoken about that elsewhere, so I agree with Mr. Evers Myers for that, I think, I assume the sign we're talking about is the big lit up pot leaf sign, that's the one? Yeah, pretty ridiculous. the one, yeah, pretty ridiculous, I think that's been gone over enough as well. Um, finally, I do think, again, I was thinking the same thing as Mr. Evers Myers before he said it, ultimately it is about the good of the town, and what they, they can play this, nothing personal, the men here tonight, everyone seems nice, like good people, the business plan seems relatively viable. However, I do think we have to get worried about the long-term, uh, well-being of the town, and fundamentally, I think having a business on the second floor as such as this does devalue the value of the apartments. I mean, if you can choose between living in an apartment or, do you have to go through the second floor and get to your apartment? Would you like to have a, live in an apartment where strange people are gonna be in the hallway all day long, from ten to ten, or nine to nine, or whatever? Would you like to live in an apartment where you don't have strange people outside the door to your apartment? I think everyone knows what it is. I mean, I tell you right now, I would live in those apartments, period. I really would not be living, that's it. And there's a lot of people who don't wanna live in both a cannabis shop, especially cannabis shop, there's another cannabis related shop on top of that. So clearly we're devaluing the value of those apartments. We might be making money short-term, like Mr. Evers Myers said, tenants coming in, and we are reducing the viability of those tenants coming in, and we're reducing the pool of people who are gonna be interested in renting from that location, and lowering the value. So that's my concern. And as Mr. Adler said, I believe, what is the compelling interest for the town to devalue these rental apartments, to take it as business, which is doing something fundamentally similar to what many other businesses are doing? Uh, that's my, uh, opinion on it. Again, it's nothing personal, everyone here seems like great people, but I do think it's difficult to see the, the benefit to the town, especially, it's hard to see how this does not devalue the apartments that we're going to attempt to rent to other people in the future. Thank you.
May I comment on the last two gentlemen, the COVID house, Marley's open.
I give the rest, I'd say. Anyone else from the back row? That's it, these guys said it all. Okay, thank you.
So, um, again, if you take this space right here, it's suite two oh one, that space is not a good apartment, doesn't reduce any apartment value, and, and it is, it is right now basically unoccupied office space, okay? And there's no real market for office space as, as the testimony has been. The second point is, it doesn't devalue the, any of the, the, the residences, because they all enter from the back of the building, they don't go through the foot, as Mr. Little testified too. So those are still in the third floor, they don't have to walk in the hallway, they don't have to walk by, you know, uh, the dispensary, they don't have to walk by, um, um, suite two oh one, they enter, enter the exit from the, from the back of the building. Uh, so this is a situation where you have basically un, where we, we get too much office space. Look, you, you look, you look at all those, the spaces, they're upper sale or for rent, uh, buildings, uh, because office space is just not desirable. Uh, so this is a way to take space that's undesirable, make it desirable, and doesn't decrease any, any, any other value. I mean, I, I believe you just approved somebody putting a, putting a residence, so, you know, on the second floor. Uh, so again, you know, this isn't devaluing the residences, you know, I plan to, plan to work for, for residency. Uh, so, um, this doesn't reduce the, the value to the residents, it re, it's really a red area.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the board? Do you, does this, does this, do we have a guard also?
No, just, the only guard is the, is the guard that's standing at the door, which is often sick, uh, but he's at the door, that, where you go straight, where you go in, to go up the steps, or you turn left to go on the floor. This is not the kind of store that needs, that needs a guard.
That's state regulation, state regulation. And then the whole, the whole thing with the garage and deliveries, that's all, and the security, that's all state regulation controlled by the can, the cannabis.
The wall inside, the presence of a guard is kind of surprising. Is he inside there?
The last time I went in there, he was in, first time I was there, he was on the outside, and now he's on the inside, and he's sort of in the corner. Uh, so there's the door that you go into the hallway, and there's a, there's a door where you make, where you make a left, but there's a, there's a corner right there, and he sits in a chair right there at that corner.
Okay, so we're not gonna find him parked out down?
No.
Under the window?
Yes, sir. Oh, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you guys, can you two have any other comments?
No.
You had flagged, you brought up the issue of the parking next to the garage, and a question where there are no parking signs to put up. Are you, do you move?
Well, I mean, I took it to the board to determine whether or not they feel that that needed.
And there were certain, Mr. Adams, there were certain, um, items that...
The testimony from him was that that was related to delivery, right?
Correct.
So, uh, but, 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 um, but, yeah, so the board can decide whether or not they feel that they should put a no parking sign up there. You put a sign up, there's still no park there maybe, you know, it's, so.
Yes, it, it, that's, you know.
I'm totally willing to do that.
Just for a little, yeah, right, but.
There are a few other, um, agreed upon, um, conditions, um, which Mr. Little agreed, but he's not an applicant. For example, they agreed to patch up the cracks in the sidewalk during the winter.
And you would, you would agree along with that too?
But so, 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 anything that's really sort of the landlord's responsibility, the landlord's not an applicant. So would you read that any conditions relating to the landlord in any application should be approved? And I don't know what, how the board's gonna handle this, but that would fall upon the applicant as a failsafe if the landlord, for some reason, decides not to fulfill those obligations. Do you understand?
And Mr. Yuri, would you agree to that?
That's fine, I'll, I'll.
I just wanted to get that on there. Um, and, and let's make clear that the applicant has not presented a sign package, there's no alt variances sought for signage, if they, if, if the use variance is granted, then they, if, if there's a non-conforming sign, they have to, or they'd have to get a permit.
Correct.
Or any sign, or have to pass any requirements of township ordinance, including any, any historic approval, if applicable, um.
There is a variance for, uh, part, uh, the, um, truck, truck, uh, delivery space.
Right, a loading space?
Loading space.
All right. And did anybody wanna comment on that? Cause that's, they've already talked about that, how deliveries would occur?
Correct, yeah, I mean, um.
What was the testimony about how frequent they were?
Or, and frequent.
I think we're talking like Amazon.
Yeah, yeah, there's no park, right, there's no parking, parking space, parking space, yeah, there's parking on High Street. I don't need any more test.
What I had is, the conditions agreed to is the signage, that would, it's not before the, the board, the racks and the patches on the sidewalk. They provided testimony as to trash and recycling, how that would work, um, as to ingress, egress, the fire marshal would have to approve that, they would have to get permits and pass any construction code requirements for the minor renovations to the interior, they'd have to pay any, um, required taxes. I don't think there's, uh, taxes related to, it's only for cannabis sales, but to the extent applicable for other items, they'd be required to follow any other ordinance applicable.
Yes, ma'am.
Then obtain all other approvals by any entities having jurisdiction. I don't think county planning board has jurisdiction over this, but those will be the usual requirements.
Yes, ma'am.
Fair, fair enough?
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that. Agree to that.
Just a reminder, as part of the initial conversation, we also agreed that there would be no use of that turning into a lamp.
Oh, yeah, that's probably my afterthoughts.
Yes, we agree to that.
Yeah, I have two items highlighted up here. Thank you. The use of cannabis pro, products will not be smoked or used in the, or used, which means chewables, uh, in the upstairs area, and, um, they're not seeking and they won't convert this to a smoke ground.
And in the third one is, you can't, you won't be able to order from, order from downstairs.
Right. Thank you.
Order from Fula, I guess, I would say.
Just a little bit, could you change? Uh, smoker, used to smoke or consume.
Thank you. So they are seeking one, um, one variance for parking in terms of requirements for the number of spaces, as was indicated in the review letters. Um, there's, I don't know if you need, um, or wanna discuss whether a, a no parking in the driveway sign should be requested of, of the landlord. Yeah, it's the driveway behind the dispensary.
All right, thank you.
And then you've seen the, the review letters in terms of, so those are both variants, and then there's a new variance required, um, for the excuse it's not permitted to have retail on the second floor. They provided their testimony, so you gotta look at whether this is particularly suited for this location, based upon the testimony provided, and whether, even with the variance for the, the, being sought, whether it would be a detriment, uh, or impair the zone plan, the zone ordinance, or the master plan, uh, the goals of the master plan. I don't know if you have anything further as to proof, so whether you wanna add up to the job.
No, I think that's it. There's, there's a good negative, I mean, it's done the office space of, the office space parking requirements are more others than the retail, so.
We have a motion to prove this application. We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Yakovich?
No.
Mr. Agar?
No.
Mr. Yafako?
Abstain.
Mr. Parker?
Abstain.
Ms. Saucier?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
We have three yeses. Two abstains, and two no's.
That doesn't, that's not sufficient, cause they need five firm votes, does anybody who abstained want to? So the people who voted yes, I assume are finding that it does meet the positive, uh, criteria, you know, they suited particularly, it's not gonna offend the zone plan and so forth, for the people who voted no, um, the two abstentions you, so it's, doesn't, hmm.
Just a question.
Sure.
Um, as far as the pla, the plan is, they, we're going to the fire department, as far as their?
They would, it would be subject to their approval.
Okay.
Okay, I guess in the floor. So it's not, it's not fair. Did he, did he secure the majority of five? So, sorry that it didn't, didn't.
Application number twenty twenty-three dash four, fifty-five sixty-one High Street, applicant A N D C I Properties, lot fifty, lot seven, the D one zone, application to deuse variance and request a waiver of the required, sir.
Sir, good evening. Uh, Mr. Singer, Wallace Singer, I'm on behalf of the applicant A N C D I Properties LLC. Um, this board heard a few months ago now, testimony from James Miller, uh, my professional planner, with respect to this application. The applicant owns the property at fifty-five sixty-one High Street. Uh, it's, it's, um, retail use on the bottom, and there was testimony that his prior office use on the second and third floors, applicant's desire to convert the second and third floors to apartments. Uh, there's extensive testimony with respect to the positive and negative criteria, um, and, uh, the issue became parking, uh, for, to support the residential use. Um, and there was also questions as to consolidation of the two lots. The applicant owns the lots on High Street, as well as lot six behind it that, uh, he acquired, uh, from, uh, that was a burned out house that he demolished and is now vacant land. Uh, initially, the applicant was, was requesting a waiver of site plan. Uh, we received, uh, the letters of both your professional and your planner, and what we would like is, we'd like the board to vote on the use variance itself strictly subject to, condition upon submission of a formal site plan. Uh, we would be willing to do that, uh, in accordance with your ordinance, we would seek some waivers from that, or we would make formal application for site plan. Uh, but as you know, uh, we have to retain an engineer, and it's expensive. Um, the application, uh, is costly, the engineering work is costly, it gets reviewed by your professionals, and so all of that is, is, is a great expense. So in order for the applicant to know that he can at least get his use variance subject to site plan, he is willing to proceed with making that application, um, and return of all at later date. Um, and again, it would be strictly contingent on, uh, the use variance will be subject to approval of your site plan. Your solicitor, I believe, would agree that when there are use variances involved, uh, it's not unusual to bifurcate the application and allow for the use variance to be heard, subject to submission of an engineered site plan, and that's what we are requesting. Um, if board denies the site plan, then the use variance is denied as well. But, uh, in order for the applicant to at least know that he can secure the use variance and allow for the proposed construction of the apartments as requested, um, that he is willing to come back with a formal site plan, uh, to be reviewed by your professionals and always to deal with their comments, of course.
Mr. Singer, uh, just so you know, and your client knows, um, we did have seven eligible members for the last application. Uh, mayor and councilman would, again, recuse themselves, but we have a member who's just brought on this year and has not heard the testimony from the prior. So we only have six people available for you, and you're gonna need five affirmative votes, so.
As long as no one abstains, uh, uh, you know, I, I've had that situation where I've had abstentions, and then I get, and, and, and I don't, but I, I wouldn't think that there would be an abstention. You know, the, the application, uh, the presentation was straightforward, uh, you know, Mr. Miller, I thought, did a great job, um, you know, the, you know, the, and just, just for your recollection, you know, there was a prior office use on the second floor, it had probably thirty, and, and the testimony was, there were at least thirty employees, um, and so we're, we're looking to create housing downtown. Um, and there was some concern about parking, so we will accommodate as much parking as we can on the adjacent lots, um, and then the balance of parking would be public parking, uh, within the local, uh, area. So, yes, we would ask, I, I understand, we would ask for a vote, uh, this evening, uh, again, asking for the variance to be approved, uh, subject to submission of a formal site plan.
So your client agrees to proceed with six eligible members?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I agree with counsel that it is not unusual to bifurcate a vote on a use variance, it happens all the time, because people wanna know whether their, the use variance is approved or not before they invest money in a, in a site plan application. So that's not an unusual. So that's not unusual. You don't have Mr. Miller here to answer tonight any questions, or?
No, his testimony was, was completed at the last meeting. If the board feels that they need additional testimony before they vote, uh, you know, we'll do it, but I think, hopefully, you recall his testimony and, uh...
It was in April.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, it was in April.
It was in April.
It was yesterday, but it wasn't.
Yeah, so it's been pending, and we've had some delays and such continuances, uh, but if the board feels that they don't recall his testimony, and if I need to bring him back, you know, despite Mr. Howard's, you know, it's his, it's his checkbook, but, you know, I want the board to, uh, be comfortable in, 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 uh, deciding the application. If you think that he needs to come back to refresh your memory, I'll do that, but hopefully, uh, that won't be necessary.
So as I understood, the application, th- there's retail on the first floor, and the, the application is for use variance to install a, uh...
It's a D five, it's a D five variance, it's a G two variance.
Right, it's for, yeah.
Apartments, one apartment is permitted on the second and the third floor. We are requesting three two bedrooms on the second floor, two two bedrooms, and one three bedroom on the third floor. The building is huge, uh, you're all familiar with it, um, they each measure, you know, eight, nine hundred square feet, uh, each, some are even larger. So there are, there are large, large apartments.
Do we have any comments from the professionals?
Well, I, to, to grant, the, the use variance, you, you kind of have to kind of know what the negatives are, and, and the, Mr. Singer said it's, the parking was the issue. So without having a plan, you don't know how many parking spaces you can get on that.
Well, I think, the, I can tell you from what I've submitted so far, there's a parking plan, an informal parking plan that we submitted. You may be able to get five, maybe six spaces. There will not, you know, the app, the app, our, except I S, we, it requires twelve, uh, so we will be short of parking. But it's, it's as much as we can provide, and there's, I've been involved in, before this board, in other applications similar to this, where there was no parking, down the street and across the street, where there was no parking, but there was public parking. So we're, you know, the part, public parking is, there is a lot of public parking within township, which is, which is nice, but, yes, I could, I could, we're not gonna fulfill the four spaces on that.
We have a lengthy number of improvements that we're requesting with, if you got the use, you would agree to do those, or?
There were improvements requested by your engineer with respect to sidewalk, yes, those are, yes, but as far as the site plan, uh, we would come in, we'd probably request a waivers. But, uh, lighting, trash, you know, all the critical issues would, would be addressed.
Well, except perhaps one, which I'm not sure whether we consider it critical or not, or whether or not the parking lot will be paved. Now, I mean, I went out to the, to the site to, to look at it today, actually, because, um, I didn't quite remember what was out there. It is a dirt parking lot with rubble from, you know, the demolition of the building. It's not, you know, it's not DGA, it's not, um, stone, it's, you know, dirt mixed with, um, you know, remnants. And there was, from the rain, there was some silt running off, onto the sidewalk. So, um, whatever, whatever they end up doing, they can't keep, I wouldn't recommend that they keep what is, is there right now.
Did you say that again?
I would not recommend that we keep what is there now, if, if they're, you know, get, get site plan approval. You know, typically, we want to pay a parking lot, typically, you know, but there are some parking lots in town that aren't paved. I mean, our business has a parking lot that's not paved, most of it's paved, but, you know, we have one that's not paved. So, you know, that's gonna be a board decision.
Yeah, if we could stone it, uh, we would, we'd place stone down, uh, but, you know, it is, it is a comp, the surface is compacted, definitely compacted. I just, you know, it's a lo, it's a small lot, so there is no opportunity really for retention. I think it's small enough, I think it's less than five thousand square feet.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be that concerned about retention, I mean, the runoff, whether, if it's, if it's compacted gravel, it's gonna run off too.
We would.
Run off now.
Run off now, correct, with silt in it.
Uh, we, we would seriously consider that if that's the case, we're gonna place a macadamon.
Any comments from members of the board? Open this up to the public. Comments from members of the public?
You call them, Rose, through the whole, or the whole group, what, what are you doing?
Okay, I'll go row one.
So, you, we thought you were done, your presentation, Mr. Singer.
Me too, but it's okay.
I would like to take the sequence of that, that's what happened here.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And then again, state your name.
Charles Howard. In two thousand eighteen, Mark Systems LLC owned the building, they had twenty-five to forty people working there. Approximately twenty years prior to that, they bought it and got a big grant, they converted from residential to offices. There were eight apartments total, four on the second floor and the third floor before they did that. You can still go in the basement and see some of the PSE and G meters down there. In two thousand eighteen, when they sold their business, they were unable to sell it, it fell through three different sellers. I purchased the building in two thousand nineteen. The second, third floor offices have been continuously, um, advertised and vacant since then. As you can see, if you watch any newspaper, any corrupt anywhere, office space is crushing us, possibly the linchpin, bringing down our economy in, in large part. So, what am I to do? I was actually approached by a member of the township administration, uh, friend of mine, and he said, you should put apartments in there. Just make them nice apartments, greater than eight hundred square feet. Okay, but I had the construction official out there, he looked at it, and he said, yeah. You, and then I had the fire inspector out there, and he said, yep, you have two external exits in each, the, the, the front right corner and the back left corner. So as long as you have a common hallway in the middle, you don't even need to have sprinkler systems or external, uh, fire escape or anything like that, because you have two means of egress for every apartment. So I took their word, and then I went to a, a, what do you call, architect, and I had designed for the smallest apartment, I believe, is nine hundred twenty-three square feet. You guys had the plans. The second two bedroom is a thousand seventy-eight square feet, and the three bedroom, it's a three bedroom on the third floor, it's a two bedroom with a, with a e- extra room. Study on the second floor is like thirteen hundred square feet. So these are nice, big, high ceiling apartments over, like, over turbine lofts, because that's what the township led me to believe they wanted. So I did all that. Then I made my big mistake. There was a vacant crack house behind it on Eight Brainerd Street, and I said, you know what? This is a crack house, it's an eyesore, it already had a big fire, the roof is collapsing, it's unsafe. I'll buy that, tear it down, make it extra parking. I did that, I did all that with permits, with the M U A involved, and, you know, Paul Hardford, the construction official involved, did everything, saying, hey, this'll make it even a sweeter deal, because no one wants a crack house to begin with, to make a property, to eyesore, it's unsafe. To my great dismay, that has been the single biggest point of discussion for this whole thing, and if I hadn't bought that Eight Brainerd Street, we'd still have the crack house with the burned out building and everything, who knows what would be there now, but I would not be addressing all these questions. So really, whatever you, I mean, I'm already close to ten thousand dollars into this without a vote, uh, between the officials that have to review it every single time and everybody, but if, if, whatever you want, I mean, I love Mount Holly, my life savings are invested in Mount Holly, my kids live in Mount Holly, tell me what you want, that's what I'll do. But, that's just kind of where I, you know, you know, where I'm at, you know, it's, it's a, right now, you know, William Moudury hates to hear from the, the attorneys I use every year to try and beat him up for taxes, because it's a great big vacant building right now, except for the first floor, where we have the wine tasting, the salon, and the dress shop, so. Thank you for, thank you for your time. Any questions for me?
Row two.
Jeff Eversmore, two oh three Broad Street. I know the applicant, and it sounds like he's trying to make Mount Holly a better place. If it, if it was, like he said, I believe him, that it was apartments or housing above, and then they converted it for offices, I can understand that. It seems like he did the right thing to get rid of an eyesore behind the building. That parking did not exist before that building, before he bought that building, they had people living above that building, you know, in the upstairs. To me, it makes sense to ma, to pursue his idea downstairs, a nice business, a lot of people come to town to utilize it, and we do want residents. The loft is, is full over there, that was turned out really nice, and that was an empty factory, which I had under contract before that got built, and they made it a beautiful building. But here's a guy in Mount Holly, invested in Mount Holly, did the right thing, tearing down a house in disrepair. That parking did not exist before he bought this building, now it exists, and if this is a problem, I don't quite understand where our common sense is coming from. Shouldn't be a problem that now there's, now there's parking available, maybe he can't build on the parking, you know, build, build anything on that parking lot, and make those six spaces, so they have six more spaces that never existed before he bought that building. So you got six more spaces that never existed, and there were people, people living above. So I think, you know, he needs a variance, whatever he needs right now to move forward, but don't waste his time. It's his time, his money, to make Mount Holly better. I don't know what you guys are doing.
I'll get up for a second, um, Arlene Pfeifer, four ninety-four, I know the property, I've been on the property, I walk the town. That little parking lot that he in the, has in the back, that would be considered an impervious parking lot. Therefore, he would not have to, uh, hard top it, if he did, then he would have to do an impervious hard top, I believe, from an environmental stand. I have a gravel driveway, a number of gravel driveways. I've been in that building, it's been years, it is a big building, and I've seen a lot of Mr. Howard's apartments, because that was my job back in the day. The wind turn on gas, turn on electric, fix the heaters, and they're all taken care of. I mean, I really want to see, I'd like to see it taken, I'd like to see residents move in. We have a lot of parking behind our buildings, and it just seems like unless you live in a city, nobody wants to look. I mean, I understand getting, getting in and getting out and get your groceries, but if you grew up in a city where you had no parking at all, you would park real quick and park somewhere behind, uh, the bar that's up there, I don't know what it is now, um, we have parking here, but we do have parking where these people can go. And I, again, I've seen his work personally, and, um, I mean, I, I just think he's been up, you know, I've been coming to enough board meetings. It, that's a lot of time and money spent here, and you guys have better things and more things to do yourselves.
Thank you.
Maureen Taylor, four one one seven Brann Street. Just as a civilian, I'm sitting here, listening to Mr. Howard's situation, uh, and what strikes me is the fact that he said he approached someone in the township. The township is the one who gave him the go-ahead to go ahead and get rid of the eyesore at Eight Brainerd Street, the crack house. I myself went over there, I don't see a big issue with the parking, it can be a gravel, or it can be, as Arlene said, something else. But, as a civilian sitting here in this audience, my take is, he approached the township, the township said, yes, get rid of the building. He went ahead and got rid of the building, and he's making apartments for, from a building that's already there. We're not, we're not building anything that's not already there, we're utilizing what is there, and that's what we want more of. We want people to come into our town to utilize what is already there existing. He's put ten thousand dollars into it, he's already, he's invested in Mount Holly, he says, his children are here in Mount Holly. And, just for me, I just, I cannot believe that he approached the township with this dilemma. The township said, yay, 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 knock it down, we support you, and now, he's ten thousand in, and we have no votes yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Back row.
Richard Dow, two three two, Ralston Avenue. Once again, with respect to everyone that's spoken before, I'm just a little bit perplexed, because I happen to be here for the April twenty-third, uh, meeting, or April twenty twenty-three meeting for an unrelated reason, and as I recall, the reason that this application stalled out then was a parking issue, and that was the main concern, and that's what, things were withdrawn for. So now we're here almost a year later, and from what's been said today, little has been talked about, talking, parking a little bit. And I don't really see any new information, though I did check with the board secretary to see what else has been submitted. I don't really see any difference between here and a year ago, if parking was the issue. So that's, you know, my concern, and, again, with respect to Arlene, of course, who I respect. However much money someone has spent, at the end of the day, the process exists for a reason. The process exists to protect us from something that we will regret later on. Now, people have been here, know, particularly the issues in town that I'm concerned about, overdevelopment, et cetera. This isn't necessarily part of that, but still, we want something in town that we're gonna be proud of. We want development in town that we're gonna be proud of a hundred years from now. This is a town that's essentially four hundred years old. Everything that we're dealing with here is projects that should be looking good hundreds of years from now. So that's why the process exists. As far as I can tell, was, was followed previously at the last meeting, and obviously, we're here again, but, you know, again, the, the argument that people have been here, done this, done that, the process exists for a reason, to protect us from bad planning decisions, so that's what needs to happen, the rules need to be followed here. And, uh, like I said, just from my point of view, I don't see what's different between here and the last time, uh, this was presented, which was fundamentally a parking issue, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Public proportions closed.
You know what's not? There's been a lot said about this property, I actually talked to Chuck today that, uh, that old house was torn down. I did, uh, I did not agree with the old house being torn down, because it did have historical value, you can look at it for the rest of time until the T D Bank gets torn down, because it is actually on the wall of the T D Bank, this was so historical, they actually painted that, a picture of it. Now, that house is gone, so that's the end of that. My, my son said at the last meeting, it was all about parking, and I'm not sure I'm hearing a commitment, uh, in paper, you know, and in writing, that, uh, this, this lot we were talking about on Brainerd Street will one hundred percent, connected to everything that we're discussing here tonight, be a parking lot. That's my concern, it's always been my concern, when I talked to Chuck, when it was being torn down, according to my notes, um, you know, we talked about it being a parking lot from that point. We also talked about it maybe being available for the Jamaican restaurant that Sh- uh, Shane owns, I don't know if he's still there. You know, that restaurant being of use, that parking, at that time, I didn't realize that, you know, what was gonna be required if he converted these, the, uh, building to apartments, because when I talked to him, it was, like he said, the second and the third floor of the business. But, uh, now that we are looking at that parking lot needed to, being needed to, uh, uh, you know, to meet the requirements or get close to requirements for the residential, would that parking lot now be posted residence only, because you do have businesses that would park in there? So that's the one question I have, it would be posted residence only, and it would be restricted to just the residents, I'm thinking, because that's the whole point of having these parking slots for that building. So, I would think that there should be something in here that would be posted residence only, and I don't agree with Arlene. I think that it should be paved, I think paved parking, in my opinion, looks, you know, it looks, it looks better. You know, it really, it, that's what a town is, a town is paved, it's sidewalk and it's tar, uh, if somebody's parking on it, you know. I know that there's gonna be, there would be a drainage issue, a runoff issue if it's paved, that's the way it goes, you know, that's, that's part of, uh, doing business. He's already put ten grand in, I think it would make great apartments, it's always been the parking, you know, the, the fellow, uh, you know, who's got a good reputation here in town, and he's really put an effort in, and it was tied up for parking last time. If he's satisfied that parking requirements will come close, I, I support his, his application a hundred percent. But I would, like I said, state that he should have it residential only parking, and, um, uh, and, and, you know, needs to, I think it needs to be paved. That's all I have, thank you.
I got my name, the, you know, the issues of site plan would be dealt with when, once the application is submitted, and again, uh, the site, the, I'm requesting the vote to be strictly contingent on submission and approval of the site plan, so all these issues with respect to surfacing and lighting and conditions of sidewalk and curb cuts, it will be done. So all these issues with respect to surfacing and lighting and conditions, sidewalk and curb cuts, will all be dealt with at some point. And if you don't agree, these variances will be first.
If you want to clarify the, um, the proposed parking plan, uh, for the lot next door?
I'm sorry?
As it pertains to the final application that we're going?
I'm, I'm sorry, is it, I understand your question.
What's the proposal, what are you looking?
Five or six?
Well, I don't know, we, we submitted a sketch plan, I think it was five, maybe possibly six spaces, but it's really, it's got to get engineered. So it has to be engineered, so.
There were eight there this Sunday Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
But if you have to go through and inform to the specific parking size, the spot?
It would be five or six.
I would assume we would, would you have more, smaller size and put more in there? Yeah, right?
There's six on this plan.
There's six on the plan, and the spaces are eighteen by, it's not by eighteen. So it's six on a, on a parking plan that has been submitted.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to be clear, like I think, to you and the audience to hear that in the beginning.
Can we come up with a vote, uh, promotion to address the attorney that was proposed here for the use variant?
There was a question about whether, do you want to add anything in terms of what the surface would be? Because we were.
I, I, uh.
Well, the wait for cycle?
Yeah, I'd like to submit the cycle. Um, and if the board disagrees with my submission, then my variance is, is null and void. But I'd like to just get, get the votes. And, uh, then submit the cycle.
So he's asking for a density variance for residential, when they see density out there. And then the, and the question, the reason he have density requirements is will the site support? So Mr. Miller, like back in, I guess, April, gave testimony that there is public parking. Yeah, I mean, has agreed to, to take that, that existing lot and turn it into a parking. But now that's not, I think it's clear he's not going to get the twelve parking spaces he needs. But I think he is willing to improve it with the site plan, which any approvals that you ran for the, uh, the use variance is going to continue. You shoot, you shoot down the, uh, the site plan and obviously the, the use variance is null and void. Just to make it clear, they're not going to be able to get the twelve, but they're going to be able to get something, they're going to be able to improve it. I, we've asked for a lot of, uh, improvements out there with the sidewalk, paving, you know, some enclosures for the trash. Some landscape lighting, so I, I think they're, from what I'm hearing, they're willing to do that and we're going to have a chance to review all that, so. You know, it's a little bit of leap of faith, you know, to say we'll gradually use without seeing all that, but I mean, I think they pretty much committed it. At least try and do the best they can. Rick and I will be, you know, checking out the plan and ensure that's the case.
So if we don't approve the cycle, then the use variance disappears, right?
Well, yeah, well, I mean, what they're going for now is, is the use variance. Because if it's not granted, then they're not, there's no point. The discussion is actually flipped.
Yeah, because there is going to be, obviously, engineering fees and, you know, if they appreciate them, they won't spend the money on that right now. It's not going to go, so there still is that safety valve in, um.
Yeah, but also the, the, the intensity of the use and, and the amenities typically inform the board whether the site does support, um, the proposed use. And this is a D five, as you said.
We, is that a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add also that because I tore down Eight Brainerd Street, that was an additional two plus required parking that no longer exists because that's gone. So now six can be used or also, I also lessen the parking requirement because of Eight Brainerd by two plus, two point whatever the, your requirement.
And you provided testimony about how it's, the office space going to residential, so the office space actually had higher parking.
Yes.
If you, if you could have applied a tenant.
Right. They had twenty-five to forty people working there for twenty years.
Do we have a motion?
To bring, because you want to do that as a positive as opposed to a negative, so that any conditions, um, will be included. Including that site lighting, trash enclosures, the parking surface and comments of the board's planner and engineer that will be addressed. Any approvals of the fire marshal and permits and inspections for that date thing. But it's subject to approval of any site plan application, is that fair? As far as the conditions.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Yakovich?
Yes.
Mr. Adar?
Yes.
Um, Mr. DeFalco?
Yes.
Mr. Perk?
Yes.
Ms. Oskin?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Epstein.
Um, Mr. Stafford?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it, we'll be back for a second. Thank you. Thank you. Comments from the public?
Uh, Louis Lopez, ninety-eight and everything, I just had a cute question of Power Revolution twenty twenty-four dash eight. Could you tell me the exact location? If you could refresh my mind?
That was the, uh, the parking lot with the heart of the hospital.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Yep, thank you, I appreciate it.
If I may, for your call, if any comments from the plan?
I have one more question.
Confidence in me for this year and, uh.
I have a question, I'm looking around town and I see, I'm not sure whether variance is being applied for, for different things that are happening. Who's in charge of making sure that there's a variance or there isn't a variance if everything's to code when it comes to four pounds or before? Like, I know the hospital tore down all those buildings, those houses, they put an eight foot fence out on the street, which is against the, you know, it used to be against code, and six. Are we getting variances for all this stuff? And if we're not, who's checking to make sure that when we approve variances, that the variant, that everything's being done correctly? That's my question. So I'm looking at things like that sign on High Street, my wife spent years on the historic commission, that was totally illegal. The Sugar Law sign was totally illegal, which went up with lights, you weren't allowed to light your signs. So all these things are happening and nobody in the township seems to be able to answer any of the questions that we've had over the years as to why it's allowed to happen and did everybody come? Do we have to open it to find out if they did get variances? Or can we go back through our records and find out what's going on? Like, I know that sign, I guess you approved the sign on High Street for the pot shop. I assume you put the variance in for that sign. Did you go through Historic Society, Historic Commission before you approved it? Or did you, you used to have to go to Historic Commission to get approvals? Then it came to you guys to try and vote on whether it's yes or no. My question, do we still have to go to Historic, get Historic approvals? Or are you guys just decide what you guys want to do?
Well, you're not historic.
Well, you used to have to go to the Historic Commission to do anything that was not, that was against the ordinances in the Historic Commission. So are they just ask Alan Hallwell or whoever's in charge, is this okay? And he says, okay. And then they, then they send you guys the information and ask for variances and you guys disregard, don't look in the Historic Commission and what they, their laws and things were, and nobody looks or is told about it. But I guess our legal team ought to be looking that up, say, does it meet the statutes in the, in Mount Holly or not? So that's my question. Maybe you guys need to look into some of this stuff and say, what's the status of our Historic, Historic Commission? I mean, it's been the funk, nobody wants to revive it so we can make progress, but at what expense?
Mr. Dow?
Yes, thank you, Richard Dow, two three two Weldon Avenue. Uh, two things, quick things. One, I also share, uh, the concern of Mr. Eversmeyer's regarding the Historic Commission in town, its relationship with the board and whether or not the Historic Commission is really functional. Legally, it still exists, but does not appear to be functioning the way it's supposed to exist. So obviously, that's a whole can of worms. Um, I hope someone in town will start getting that straightened out, uh, because it is not, the commission clearly is not functional for quite some time. Secondly, uh, with regards to what Mr. DeFalco brought up earlier about changing the meeting time, obviously, it's a double eyesore, the meeting time, seven o'clock meeting is just about nine oh P M here, so later meeting means we get done later, but at the same time, people have work. So if you move it back to six o'clock, it's going to charge the people to make it, you know. At the end of the day, on the balance of things, I think moving the time back to six will limit the amount of people from the public who are able to participate, which is not desirable, I think, from my point of view, hopefully not anyone else's. I imagine this will be discussed in the future, February or March meeting, but I just want to put my thoughts in, thank you for your time.
Richard Dow, two thirty-two Weldon Avenue. One hundred percent support what Jeff is saying about the Historical Commission. Been very vocal about the Historical Commission being basically dissolved by attrition by not appointing to the commission. You know, I was involved with that and, um, we need it back. The signage issue he brought up on High Street, that lawyer's office, I was at all those meetings for that. The Historical Commission held their ground on that, really, really put it to them. So the Historical Commission is here for a reason. You know, some residents weren't happy that there were some real sticklers that had to be, you know, that they had to live by. Paint color, the paint, there's a whole list, we had the guy, I forget his name, you know. We need that Historical Commission, the town is just like, uh, four hundred years old, like my son was saying, give or take a few years. So, you know, without an actual Historical Commission, you guys in kneecap really, I don't know how you're making any decisions without having an actual Historical Commission looking at what's being done prior to it coming to the planning board. They, it worked together, it always worked together. So, uh, again, this, this is, uh, what Jeff is bringing forward, my son's bringing forward. A lot of people in the town really, you know, are missing that Historical Commission and keeping the township historical through the Historical Commission. Thank you for your time.
Comments from the plan?
Um, yeah, just, uh, thank you for, uh, reappointing us and look forward to working with you again.
Thank you for your support. Comment from the questioner?
I'll only take fifteen or twenty minutes. Senior, thank you for, uh, reappointing, it's a pleasure, sir, of course.
Comments from members of the board?
So, and I don't know if Ms. Garde remembers, I think back in November, we had the email discussion. Uh, the chief of police came to me and said his officers can no longer deliver the planning board packets. Who had been doing them, I've been here eighteen years and have been doing it longer than that. So we're going to have people submit electronically too. But if you want a paper copy, what, did we decide they have to come pick it up?
That's true.
Yeah.
I'll just come.
So, um, or I could bring a paper copy to the meeting with me, but we're going to get everything electronically like we did for COVID. Except during COVID, we had the computers and everybody brought up the exhibits, so if you want a paper copy to have open up a meeting, I can bring paper copies, but you'll be getting everything via email like we did for Zoom and no more delivery of paper copies.
So, to what most boards do, if they're in that boat, if they're not able to support that, is they do send the, the application documents out electronically. Board members can either pick them up and if they do not pick them up, then the, the paper copies for each board member. Let's say, you know, if somebody didn't pick it up, that person would have a, a packet.
At maybe.
Okay, understood they've already received the electronic copy. And sometimes people like.
Save a tree, use a piece of. I just made it up on the fly.
But the thing is, I, I still, I still have to get all the paper copies. Want a paper copy, I have to have it.
I agree with Ms. Garde how we all get it electronically and if we don't come pick it up, it'll be here at the meeting board.
But I just want to let you know that. It's not that I can just watch you.